All right. It's six thirty-two, call to order, this meeting of the Champagne County Board Committee of the whole. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
King.
Here.
Lockshin.
Here.
McGuire. Michaels. Pasalacqua.
Here.
Paul. Rodriguez. Store.
Present.
Straub.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Van Hethirnott.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Wolken. Carter.
Here.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Portado. Goss.
Here.
Harper. Patterson.
Here. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda, could I have a motion? Taylor, second. Lockshin.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion or additions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting. Could I have a motion?
So moved, Straub.
Straub and King, all right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next on the agenda is public participation, and just a reminder, the public participation is limited to five minutes and a cumulative time of one hour. Steve McDowell? Ste- Steve McDowell?
Okay, I haven't been given very good instructions here. Okay, what I'm here for is to show support for Aaron Hammond. I'm a Republican judge, and I've been for six years, and he's always been professional and always been understanding and treated me with respect at all times. And I hope people realize that, I want people to realize that, and I'm not the only one either, so there's other people that's going to be speaking. So I just wanted to show my support and for Mr. Hammond, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Angela Lusk.
Hello, my name is Angela Lusk. I live here in this community in Urbana, at two-six-oh-five Somerset in Urbana. I am an AFSP member, and I have been for eighteen years. I've been in three offices, I've worked for the county clerk's office, the circuit clerk's office, and now I work for the chief judge. What I'm here to discuss is our raises, basically, is living wage is, we're trying to make sure that most of us are here supporting each other and supporting this cause. We do have quite a number of members, though, that can't be here tonight because they have to work a second and third job. And this used to be a job back in the day where you only had to work one job. We used to only have to work one job, and we were here from the beginning until we retired. And it's not seeming like that's something that the county is, seems valuable to the county or county employees, that, you know, some people, you know, leave or two, leave after two or three years because most of us are doing two and three jobs. Because we're so shorthanded. We don't have, a lot of employees that are brand new are so overwhelmed when they come here that they want to leave immediately. We're trying to be encouraging of them to stay and stick it out with us. Maybe we'll get a raise, I don't know. But we would like, we're shorthanded in management and in just being an employee, and it's just hard when you don't have a good cost of living wage. And everything's gone up, gas, you know, your Ameren bill, everything, and we need you to take this very seriously because we are the reason why the county runs. We are the reason why people can come in and get stuff pretty quickly to get copies or what have you, it's because of us. And it's the people who vote you into office every year or every few years that is the reason why this county runs. Most of us have either campaigned for you all, because you're mostly Democrat, most of us have walked in parades, we've, you've done that on our back, you've gotten where you are because of us. And we just want a fair living wage. We just, we've heard that some of the elected officials are getting like a forty thousand dollar raise or this and that, and that like, that just makes us want to scream because if it wasn't for us, they couldn't do their job, you know, I mean, just, it's not how the county used to run, and it just seems like the county is now running, it's like whoever begs the most for money, and I'm tired of begging for money from you all, it's been eighteen years of it. Some years you have been fair, but that was a long time ago that you had this market share of who, like Macon County, Segaman, all that, what their employees were paid, and you actually paid us a decent wage, and we got our contract done in very quickly. Now it's taking us forever to get a contract, and pretty soon, you're going to see pickets, pretty soon, you're going to see all these employees out here, you're going to see them doing a lot of different things, and you're not going to like it. Because we're going to speak out, and we're going to say what we want to say, and I just want you all to understand how frustrated we are when we see the county officials buying random ignorant things or spending money in a frivolous man- manner, or actually, the one thing that pisses, makes me angry the most, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't mean to do that. What angers me the most, I think, is when we see a majority of management, you know, spending money on things that we don't feel is necessary when we know that their employees are necessary, good employees are necessary, and stop this whole thing of having new employees want to leave immediately. This is what we're asking you to do today, is go to the county officials and ask what can we do to give our employees a good living wage, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Robert Burkalter.
Good evening, my name is Robert Burkalter, I know most of you, it's good to see all of you again. I work for the chief judge as well, I've worked for the circuit clerk, I've worked for the chief judge, I've worked for the county for fifteen years. We feel like we're in the hardest fight for a contract that we've ever been in, we're six months out of a contract, and it doesn't feel like we're being listened to. We understand that the times are tight for us, times are tight for everybody, but we're, you know, we're trying to make decisions about how to get to work and how to eat, that's where we're at. You know, like Angela said, some of the people that wanted to talk tonight can't be here because they're at a second job, I'm lucky enough to be off of my second job tonight, I've worked for the county for fifteen years and I still have a second job. It's really hard. It's really hard to make it work right now, and we're seeing people get contracts here in the county, and we just want you guys to know that we're here, and we don't want to be at the bottom of the list. Labor is what makes this county run, this county runs because we work, and we need to be prioritized, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Thompson.
Good afternoon, my name is Patrick Thompson, and I am the owner of Via Inc. We are a local minority construction company, we are a union construction company, and we've been in business for about thirteen years. I am here tonight to talk to the board as well as staff regarding adopting some kind of minority policy for contracting. I believe a few weeks ago, there was a forum held, and there was discussion about the county doing a twenty million dollar renovation, and it was geared towards trying to get minority contractors and small businesses to participate. Well, if you guys don't have any policy in place, then how do you expect minority contractors to participate on those construction projects? They, most of the projects that you guys see that's being built, you know, highway, I dot, university, state projects, those projects have minority or DBE goals on them, and that's how we are able to participate on those projects. Locally here in Champagne, you know, when you guys are traveling, and you look and you see, well, you might say, well, where is, you know, where is the diversity at? Well, that's, the diversity is when agencies and municipalities start putting goals on their construction projects. And those projects will create diversity, it will allow us to have great opportunities to, for employment, and I think, so I'm hoping, I left my business card up there, I'm hoping that someone at the county can either contact me or to discuss about how do you guys adopt a policy, whether you adopt a state policy, or I think the city of Champagne has just, has a program, they call C DAP, and it's similar to the state business enterprise program. And I'm hoping, and I've been talking to the county for plus ten years now about this, so a lot of you guys, some of you have been here, and some of you have not, so it's been a long time, but we, I am here again today to bring that back, and I do not, you, I do not believe that you guys have to have a disparity study done in order to adopt the policy. I don't think that's, I mean, we used to hear that a lot, but I don't think that's something that needs to be done. Most of the general contractors already are participating on these, in these, well, they already are, are used to having goals on construction projects, so they are not, they are familiar with it, but if you guys don't have a policy in place, then there's, you surely will not see anyone like myself on any of your construction projects, so I will leave you with that. As I said again, I left my business card up there, so whoever's in charge of that, the construction, or can email me or contact me, and we would definitely hope that we can see more goals on the local bulletin for the, for the county on their projects. So we would also like to see them on those as well, so that we can see black and African-American businesses, minority businesses, start to be developed and grow and prosper and create diversity, thank you.
Thank you. Next is David and Barbara Powell.
You have to share the mic. I do, I have to let him talk as well, but I'll talk first. We're Dave and Barb Powell, and we have been election judges since about two thousand eight. Four years ago, when the election happened, we were very dismayed because we thought Gordy Hilton was doing a great job, and all of a sudden, there was a Democrat coming into office, and we're Republicans, by the way. We thought, oh my God, what's going to happen? So, we thought, well, we need to continue to be election judges so that we can kind of monitor what's going on. So we did early voting, and then a couple of years ago, we were asked if we would come and work in the clerk's office prior to the various elections to do things like deal with problems with mail-in ballots, if someone needed a new ballot because they spoiled theirs and so on. What we have found is that Aaron is an ethical man, and he's trying very hard to do a wonderful job. And I know there are a lot of people in the community who are trying to undermine what he's doing, but we have spent two years working pretty closely with him. He and the staff are focused on allowing every eligible voter to vote, and it really upsets me, as a Republican, to see him being attacked by people. Somehow saying that he doesn't help old people be election judges, or that he is somehow discriminating against Republicans.
I think Aaron is a fine man, but that doesn't make any difference, what I think about him, beg pardon, she's telling me what to say. Fifty-six years.
I am the boss of him.
Yes, she is the boss of me. I think Aaron is a fine gentleman, but it doesn't make any difference what I think of him as a person, it's what I think of him as a professional, I've never seen anybody work harder to overcome the burden of taking this job. Anybody who ever thought of stepping into the job of county clerk, and everything that entails, probably never ran for the office. It is a mountain to climb, he has climbed it, and he still climbs it. He is affable, personable, and he'll tell us when we're wrong, which is one of the ways we know he's being honest. He's assembled a staff that does not kowtow, his staff tells him if he may be doing anything wrong. Haven't seen that recently, but there are always clerical errors that have come up in the past, because you can't know everything about this job from the beginning. Aaron has always seemed to me to be a man of honor and integrity. I don't know much else I can say about that, I've been through a lot in my own life, I've served with a lot of different people, I've served under a code of honor, but I believe Aaron is also an honorable man, and does what he thinks is best for the voters of this county, regardless of whether the Republican, Democrat, or independent.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Evans.
Thank you for letting me speak. In case I'm recognized as a Urbana City Council member, which I am, let me give a first disclaimer, the comments I'm making tonight do not represent the city of Urbana, do not represent the city council, they're just my opinions as a constituent of yours in District Nine. So I've lived in Champagne County and Champagne, Urbana since nineteen seventy-six, and I have watched economic development happen on campus with all the high rises, West Champagne with all the subdivisions, I've watched downtown Champagne become a entertainment district and all that economic development. I've also watched this body build a ten million dollar satellite jail in nineteen ninety-four, a twenty-four million dollar courthouse, which you're still paying for till twenty twenty-nine. I've watched you build a three million dollar youth detention facility, I've watched you do a six-point-eight million dollar rebuild of the bell clock tower, and another five million dollar project, remodeling project at the courthouse, and this year, you've adopted another twenty million dollar project to expand the satellite jail. And those kind of investments may seem necessary, we are over here, over at Urbana, we're, you know, we just voted to put school resource officers into the schools, we're probably going to do like Champagne did, which is hiring bonuses and retention bonuses for police officers, we're down, we're short seven police officers. We also are going to hire four civilian positions to help with investigations, so we're making similar investments that you are. But while they may seem necessary, they're not progress, and so what I want to talk about tonight is economic development, and hopefully, we can start making some investments in the community the same way we make investments in law enforcement, and what I'm hoping to do in Urbana is adopt the Champagne, what is it, Diversity Advancement Program, which does prioritize minority and women-owned businesses in our city contracts, and you have, I know, the County Plaza, the twenty million dollar County Plaza project and the twenty million dollar jail project, and so what we're trying to do in Urbana, and I'm inviting you to do as well, is to somehow set some, you know, percentage goals to prioritize and allow for minority businesses and women-owned businesses to participate in the county contracts. and women-owned businesses to participate in the county contracts, the, um, taxpayer contracts essentially. Um, and, and, and it's spread the, you know, the prosperity, if you will, or the opportunity to, um, you know, get some work. Uh, I think employment is going to go a long way toward public safety. I see employment as part of the public safety plan. Um, I also, you know, envision, uh, or others envision too, is, uh, you know, policies that, uh, allow for affordable housing, allow for, you know, strengthening our schools, um, job creation, neighborhood development, workforce development. That's very key, you know, having, uh, you know, educational scholarships, um, small business loans and grants, and also, um, you know, union apprenticeships to get people, you know, in jobs, good-paying jobs, the kind of jobs that these people want. Um, and, uh, you know, just spread the, you know, economic, uh, development all over the community, not just in the select communities that we've seen so far. So, um, thanks for your time, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. All right, that's the last slip I have. Is there anybody else who wish to participate in public comment? All right, moving on, uh, communications. Do any board members have any communications? Um, you see in the packet, we do have a, um, a few items under communications. I don't know if anybody had a comment about any of those.
I'd just like to thank everybody who made a public comment for coming out tonight. Um, we've heard you.
Uh, Mr. Goss?
Yeah, I just thought I would bring to your attention that the, uh, the group that you supported last meeting was written up today by the Edgar County Watch Dogs with a electioneering violation and an ethics violation at Sangamon Valley Public Water District today. So, um, that's who you supported, you didn't support the right side.
Ms. King?
I'd also like to thank everyone who came out to speak to us tonight. I'm, I'm very frustrated that this is the first I'm hearing that your contract negotiations are going this badly, and I'm hoping that in the future, the board leadership, namely the executive, will keep the board more appraised of what's going on because you are the backbone of our county, and no one who's working full-time should ever have to work two jobs to make ends meet.
I'm going to echo Mary's comments. Thank you, Kyle. Um, I knew a little bit about this that was going on. We get no updates here on the board from the executive or the executive's office about how negotiations are going. I want you to know that this board member supports you and thanks you for coming out, and make sure you get those signs up high when that camera's on, uh, because people need to know about it, and the more people know about it, the more people will try to support you. I wish you good luck. When it gets to us, we're going to have your backs.
All right, is there anybody else for communications? All right, next on the agenda is a presentation about the I Voted sticker contest winners. You, you don't have to push the button this time, it's already on.
I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Patterson?
Uh, just letting you know that the mic's already on.
Oh, they left it on for me this time. I appreciate it. A cord? Is there one that, I thought it was one that was always up here? Someone?
Do we need an adapter, or is there a cord up here? Huh? Yeah. Yeah.
I thought there was a cord up here. Do we have a cord up?
Sorry for the interruption.
I'm just trying to show powerpoint.
We're going to need to pull it up on this computer. Did you happen to bring it on?
No, we hooked it up to this last time.
Hooked it up? Okay.
I thought we did.
Do you have a flash?
Listen, we can, we can. I, I think we can move forward.
Okay. We'll just turn it around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
So, there you go.
Okay.
All right, well, I thought we were going to be able to see it on the screen. I do believe we sent a memo, uh, to you all already to see the, the contest winners. Uh, they're not going to be able to see it like that. I don't know. Anyway, I wanted you all to be able to see them in the public, to be able to see them up there, so I don't know what we're going to be able to do about that. But we had five winners, four winners from, uh, actually five winners from seven categories. And, uh, one of them was the K-through-five group, and, uh, we did not have the permission to, to share that one. But we had a winner, uh, from the ninth to twelfth grade, Robin F., who designed a, um, very colorful I Voted sticker with I Voted across the top with three fists raised, and also you can see, um, the, uh, what do you call it? The wristbands, um, that represent, uh, trans folks. So it was a very compelling, um, sticker also. I did not vote for any of these. There were other people, other folks we assembled who voted. I think maybe somebody in this room may have voted on something? No? I thought Kyle was involved in it. Yes, indeed. All right. And then the second one was for the eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds, uh, Ms. Elena Peterson, and she has one on, it's, uh, looks like, it's an African-American woman, but you see her from the back, and it looks as though she has locks, and she's holding up a sign that says, "I voted", and we also see "I voted" in different languages that, uh, around the circle of that particular design. Again, that was the eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds. And then we had the twenty-six-to-fifty-four-year-old winner, Adam Majerzak, Meyerzak? Majerzak? I'm trying, okay. Uh, and his, or, uh, was in "I voted", it said "I voted" across the top of it with three stars, and then the words of "I voted" in several different languages, and then a, um, a very good representation of, uh, diversity across the bottom, and it says 2022 Champaign County. So they were the winners at the bottom of that one. Uh, the fifty-five-and-an-older group, Krista Sunderland, won that one, and it is a, uh, dark blue square picture that says, "My Vote, My Voice, Our Future". And then, um, the other categories, these were submissions, submissions into the other categories. I thought they were very, very clever, so I wanted to use them, um, the stickers anyway, although they didn't win those categories. So a future voter winner was Annie A., and she has like an old Abraham Lincoln hat, and the original piece that she put in says, "I'm an Illinois voter". This one says, "I'm a future Illinois voter", so we're using it for children or young people who come in. And then there was the, the last one. I don't know, maybe some of you younger people in here remember Cubert, uh, the game Cubert, and this, this one reminded me of it. But it's a blue thing. I don't know what this thing is. Uh, with a circle eye, looks like a red egg or something, a poached egg or sunny-side-up, and it says, "I voted". I thought it was very cute. Uh, so we, we share that with young people who come in as well. So overall, the contest went over very well in the community. We got a lot of good submissions. Uh, people were excited about it, and we hope to do something similar in the future. And we're going to use a few of these as banners or posters that we can put up in other places so people can see, uh, the winners as well. And they will be receiving their gifts later on. They couldn't make it here tonight, so, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, the stickers are now available at early voting sites, so at Brookins, so people can choose which kind of sticker they want. We've got a really great reception, it was a lot of fun. So thanks to the judges. Um, winners are going to be mailed certificates and the prizes that were associated with their individual categories. So, thanks to everybody who shared and promoted, and, uh, we had a really positive response. Yes, sir.
Microphone.
Do you only get to choose one of the stickers, or can you choose multiple stickers after you vote? Wayne, you can have as many stickers as you like. Uh, we're going to...
Now, now, I just want to make sure. If I take multiple stickers, because of everything with election fraud, that doesn't mean that I've voted multiple times. Is that, is that right?
No, not, that does not mean that at all. It means that you're really excited about voting, I think. Uh, yes.
Now, what if I vote, hold on, and, uh, my sticker, it drops off? Can I come back?
And get another one?
And get another sticker?
Absolutely, Wayne, we will be happy to give you another sticker. Yes, indeed. I'm not the chair, I can't call on people. We, we up here trying to run the meeting and everything.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate all the winners of the contest. I thought the stickers were really clever, and I was just telling Steve here that I really want that monster future voter sticker, even though I've been a registered voter for quite a few years now.
We got you. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next up is policy personnel appointments. Chris?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Patterson. Uh, the county executive has the monthly human resources tally on file. Uh, we're still looking for people. Uh, under poli-, uh, under appointments and reappointments, we have several, and I'd like to do this in an omnibus if we can, uh, resolution appointing Wendy Hundley to Forest Preserve District Board. Term January first, 2022 through June 30th, 2027.
Chris, it's July.
Oh, sorry, July first, oh. Yeah, July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2027, by mistake. Resolution appointing Kathy Emmanuel to County Board of Health. Same, uh, term length, resolution.
No, it's not.
Well, you're right. July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Resolution appointing Brent Restick to the County Board of Health. Term Janu-, uh, July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Resolution appointing David Thice to County Board of Health. Term July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Resolution appointing Misty Nelson to the Bill Haas Chapel Cemetery Association. Term July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2028. Resolution appointing Brandon Hastings to the Bill Haas Chapel Cemetery Association. July first, 2022 through June 30th, 2028. Resolution appointing Stuart Williams to the Eastern Prairie Fire District, Fire Protection District, term ending April 30th, 2024. Resolution appointing Ken Ostaber to the Ogden Royal Fire Protection District, term ending April 30th, 2025. Resolution appointing Ed Feeney to the Cankey Key Drainage District, term ending August 31st, 2024. Do we have a, uh, motion and a second? Move approval? Thank you, Steve. Second. Uh, thank you, Lee, for a second. Discussion to the motion. Just want to thank these fine people for taking their time to serve on these boards and drainage districts. It's a lot of time out of their life, and I appreciate their, their work, and I know we all do. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. The county clerk monthly report is on file. Item C, public defender. Request approval for travel reimbursement for Jeannie Miller-Jones on February 22nd, 2022, and request approval for travel reimbursement for Andrea Bergstrom on February 14th, 2022. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Beth, for moving. Uh, second, Ms. Lorraine Covert, thank you. Uh, discussion for the motion. Uh, Ms. Michaels?
Sorry, this may be a silly question. I was just wondering why it wasn't under finance? Is it because it's within their prerogative to go ahead and move these monies? I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It just seemed odd that it didn't show up in finance or for payment.
It's a surprise to me, too. Uh, Madam Executive, do you have a, is there a reason?
It's just under the travel reimbursement policy.
There's, there's no good reason for it, it's just our policy. Ed always wanted to say that one. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The county, the next item is D, county executive workforce study update. That would be county executive couple.
So tonight, Bill Colbrook, who's the Director of Administration, is going to just give you a brief update about the workforce study that's progressing.
So indeed, we've heard a lot about the workforce study in the previous months, and it is underway. Uh, just real quick, what we've been doing is, uh, of course, we've had a lot of, um, uh, Zoom meetings, just trying to share information back and forth, uh, trying to organize. Uh, of keynote, uh, I've uploaded a lot of documents, including job descriptions, the wage scales, so they have that data, so they can synthet- synthesize that, you know, back at their offices. We had a department head meeting, uh, last week, I believe, and it was, uh, expressed to us that the department heads really desired to have an anonymous survey. So we have responded in kind. So we've been working the last several days developing an anonymous survey. Uh, we've kind of beta-tested that yesterday and today, and that should be going out very, very quickly to all county employees. Next is the focus groups. Uh, the consultants will be onsite next week, the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and we are currently organizing, uh, those focus groups for in-person meetings. The, ideally, ten employees, probably no, no bigger than fifteen, just so there can be good discussion. And not only are we going to focus on the employees, but the managers as well. Uh, the managers more than likely could be in person, but we can also reserve the right that they could be on Zoom just because they're more used to having, uh, virtual meetings as opposed to a subordinate employee. So that's, that's base, that's the basic update that we're doing so far. If you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to answer whatever you have.
Phil, uh, how are employees selected for the focus group?
How are employees, um, selected for the focus groups? We've got roughly 450 employees. There's no way we're going to be able to have 450 in the focus groups. But, um, if I remember off the top of my head, the targeted offices that we've identified are the offices that current, that have current, uh, staffing issues or have had staffing issues in the past, including corrections. Uh, the sheriff in general. Uh, just because we want to focus on corrections, we don't want to exclude sheriffs deputies, the law enforcement road deputies, but corrections for sure. Juvenile detention center. Let's see, uh, coroner's office. They, they, they're fully staffed, but in recent history, they weren't. They struggled a lot. Same with IT. Uh, we, we struggle, you know, to attract and retain IT professionals here in the county. So we've identified targeted groups. Oh, I don't want to forget public defender, state's attorney. So we, we're going to focus on those groups that we know have had struggles, and then after we give priority to those groups, then we're going to open it up to the rest of the, uh, to the offices.
Mr. Colbrook? Or would employees be able to make, uh, anonymous or, or, or sign, uh, requests or statements other than what you're soliciting?
There's plenty of text boxes in the anonymous survey, which gives the employee plenty of opportunity, you know, to, uh, to respond. Uh, in addition to that, the consultants are absolutely open to have one-on-one sessions, either in-person or, uh, virtually with any employee, uh, in the county to address any specific concern. We want as much data, as much information from everybody as possible.
We sure hea- sure heard some this evening.
I'm sorry?
Said, "We sure heard some this evening".
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
I'm sorry, I, I, I was waiting for the Policy Personnel and Appointments Chair to wake up. Ms. Samantha Carter?
So do you know about how long we should get a response from the workforce study, and when will you share it with the board?
We're targeting the workforce study being done in late summer, early fall. I'll let the County Executive speak to exactly when the report will be delivered, but hopefully. Yeah. Late summer, early fall.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on. There is no other business. The Chair does not have a report. Items to be placed on the consent agenda are Items 8, A, 2, A through I, and C, 1 and 2. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Finance. Jim?
Thank you. Item number, number A1, Budget Transfer, BUA 2022-5-15. Fund 1080, General Corporate to Department 036. Public Defender amount is $15,000. The reason is due to vacant positions in the Public Defender's Office. A private attorney is required to assist with felony cases. Since the attorney is not a county employee, a transfer from full-time employees to professional services is necessary. Do I have a motion? Aaron, second. Eric, any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Store.
Thank you. I took note on page 36 of the request by the Public Defender that they had lost within, that they had lost three experienced attorneys within three weeks of each other. And I'm sure that's kind of causing some big problems for that department.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 2, Budget Amendment, BUA 2022-5-16. Fund 2089, County Public Health Fund to Department 049, Board of Health. Increased appropriations are $323,229. Increased revenue is $323,229. The appropriation is required to expend funds received from the COVID-19 crisis grant. Is there a motion? Ms. King, second. Ms. Lauchan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 3, Budget Amendment, BUA 2022-5-475. From Fund 2075, Regional Planning Commission to Department 100, Regional Planning Commission. Increased appropriations are $85,000. Increased revenue is $85,000. The reason is the appropriations required to use the funds from the community block grant to support case management staff, providing services to households receiving tenant-based rent assistance vouchers through the households impacted by gun violence program. Is there a motion? Mr. Summers? Ms. Strobe has a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 4, Budget Amendment, BUA 2022-5-476. Fund 2075, Regional Planning Commission to Department 100, Regional Planning Commission. Increased appropriations are $125,000. Increased revenue is $125,000. The reason is the appropriation is required to use the home funds received to pay for tenant-based rental assistance for families enrolled in the tenant-based rent assistance for households impacted by gun violence program. Is there a motion? Mr. Paslakwa, second. Ms. Carter, any discussion? Ms. Michaels?
Sorry, just a quick question here. The reason is the same for 3 and 4, which is fine, but are they just going to two different funds? But the purpose is the same?
Well, one comes from the community block grant, and the other comes from the home fund.
Got it. Thanks. Sorry.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Budget Amendment, BUA 2022-5-483. Fund 1080, General Corporate to Department 140, Correctional Center. Increased appropriations are $1,313,709. Increased revenue is zero. Reason, budget amendment for out-of-county inmate housing. We do have the sheriff, the deputy, Chief Deputy and Carrie Vogus in the Corrections here to answer questions. Would you like to come up? I guess I should ask. Has anybody got questions? Yeah, let's go ahead and get a motion. Ms. Lauchan, second. Ms. Michaels, now we can have a discussion.
Good evening, everyone. I expected this one to go as quickly as the other three. Just kidding. So thank you for entertaining our motion today for a budget amendment. As you are likely aware, last year, the County Board approved a budget of, for out-of-county housing. And at that time, the intent was to close the downtown facility. That, speaking with each of you individually, I believe we all have the consensus the downtown jail needs to close and is needed to close for some time. At that time, we saw an unexpected increase in the inmate population, and it just didn't make sense to house 70 inmates out of county and an additional 70 inmates out of county, which is about what our increase was while we had a facility there. So we housed 70 inmates out of county, but we continue to use the downtown facility. So I come to you now as a combination of different factors that has led to the immediate closure of the downtown jail being needed. Of those, we continue to see safety and security issues. There has been no, I don't want to say no maintenance, but there has been nothing done to increase the capacity of the downtown jail as far as mechanics and things like that. And now, much like the rest of the world, we are struggling with personnel issues as well. And so at the beginning of May, my staff and I got together, and we decided that the best way that made the most sense to, for lack of better terms, stop the bleed of employees leaving was to start moving inmates out of county. And the reason why this is important is today we are seeing more and more violent inmates that are accused of committing offenses in our custody than we have before. What we were seeing was, is we had a few employees that had left, which then increased the overtime with an increased violent inmate population, which then increased the stress on those employees that were remaining, which then increased the amount of employees that were leaving. So we had to take drastic action at that point in order to get things as much under control as we can. And then now I'm here for you to essentially pay for it. So I didn't believe we could wait until this board meeting to come and ask for the money before we started housing out of county. So what have we done so far? When we started in May, so we have housed out of county all but 10 inmates at the downtown jail. So as I have mentioned to you before, it's not necessarily finding housing for 10 inmates to close the downtown jail completely. All of these 10 inmates have special circumstances. So what I mean by that is segregation issues, mental health issues, things like that. The downtown jail is the only facility we have that has single inmate housing. So that's why those 10 are still there. We have had an extremely difficult time in finding placement for inmates to house out of county, which is something we have all had the discussion of before as well. Kankakee County has actually been very helpful with us to move the majority of our inmates. And as of this morning, I just solidified an MOU with Macon County to accept additional inmates from us. And so I was very hesitant to put a number on how many inmates it would take for out-of-county housing, but you can't approve a budget amendment unless you have a number to consider and then approve. And so I put that number of 70 additional inmates. That would bring the grand total to 140 if we're putting a number on this. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this number is relatively subjective, as you would notice in my memo, because we don't control how many intakes we may have in a given night. And so there may be times where we have to house a few more inmates out of county for the night until they have their arraignment or their bail hearing or things like that. There may be times where we have fewer inmates that are needing housed out of county, depending on how long it takes for Department of Corrections to accept an inmate or how long it takes Department of Human Services to accept an inmate. And so there are a variety of factors at play. As I mentioned in my memo, this was not an easy decision. It is difficult on my staff to house out of county. It is also difficult on the Public Defender's Office. It's difficult on the State's Attorney's Office. It's difficult on the judiciary. It's just inconvenient for all of us. However, we had to take action, and because of the reasons I've been up here telling you about the last three and a half years, and Sheriff Walsh was telling you about for about a decade before that, things have finally came to a point to where we have to close the downtown jail, and we have to never open it again. And so my goal is, within two weeks, we have the additional inmates moved from the county jail and the facility closed, granted that funding is approved.
Questions from the board? Start Mr. Williams, then Ms. Carter.
Does this number get us through the end of the fiscal year for the 140?
It does. And so there was a little bit of a deficit for the initial 70 inmates that we housed out of county. And we knew that, the County Board knew that that probably was not going to be entirely budgeted for. So that is to complete the rest of the year for them, as well as an additional 70 inmates. So yes, that number should be all-encompassing for the rest of this fiscal year.
Ms. Carter?
Can you tell me where some of the, what's the furthest place that some of the inmates have been placed?
So the fir-, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but the furthest is Kankakee County. We housed 30 inmates at DeWitt County, which is in Clinton, for several months. They, a combination of COVID, and they are going through employment issues as well, made them send our inmates back to us. And so obviously, it's more convenient for us than everyone else, the closer they are to Champaign County. And so we are always looking for the closest county that's willing to accept inmates to do that. But Kankakee County has been the furthest one so far. And I hope that it doesn't get any further than that.
So no one's been placed in Kentucky? Has anyone been to Kentucky?
No, ma'am. I don't believe we can even legally house out of county.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, out of state.
Any further discussion? I have just one question. Ms. Vogus, where are we at on capacity at the satellite jail today?
Shoot. Right now, our numbers, as of this morning, are 320 inmates, which is the highest we've been in many, many years, with 106. Please remember, our capacity is only 182. So we currently have people that are unable to actually live in a cell. They're living on a boat in the dayroom because we're already over that 80% capacity. So our numbers are continuing to rise, even though we don't have the location and space to put them. The, today alone, on day shift, before I left, I got this number. We had 11 intakes come in on day shift. We had a nine in arraignment today, and only one person got out. So that means there's eight more bodies right there that are coming in that we have to make sure we have space for and a place to put them. So those are the numbers right now, which don't seem to be going down.
Yeah, Mr. Store.
Just want to thank Captain Vogus and the sheriff and all the people in the, working in the Corrections and the juvenile detention for the, their continued patience and work during these difficult times. And we've heard stories, and I thank them for their service. I know we all do.
Mr. Esri?
Thank you. This is a comment, or fully understand with this number, you can't predict the future. Neither can I. I'm just going to put it out there, though, I'm not going to be surprised if we don't see you coming back yet again for another budget amendment. I hope not. I pray not. I hope your numbers are plenty to cover it, but I'm going to put that out there. I wouldn't be surprised. So I'm, and that's not saying anything bad about the way you came about with this number or anything bad about the way you're running the current correctional facility, the current county jail. I agree that this needs to be done, and I'll fully support this money, but like I say, I'm just going to put it out there that I'm, for the record, that I won't be surprised if we won't see you back again yet this year. Thanks.
Mr. Summers? Ms. Lauchan, you're on deck.
I, too, would not be surprised. I, too, would not be surprised if you do end up coming back, but no one can predict the future. However, if we continue to house prisoners in an unsafe environment for both themselves and for our staff, the potential liability costs could be way, way more than what we'd be looking at in terms of, you know, spending additional funds to house out of county. So thank you for your service.
Ms. Lauchan?
Mr. Summers basically just said what I was going to say as well. I know that the costs for lawsuits that may come up with continuing unsafe housing in addition to the employee stress that's been added could be far more in turnover and litigation than what we're spending here. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Last call. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you both for being, thank you all three for being here this evening. We appreciate it very much. Okay, Item 6, Budget Amendment, BUA 2022-5-484. From Fund 1080, General Corporate to Department 031, Circuit Court. Increased appropriations are $66,265. Increased revenue is $66,265. Reason is requesting additional appropriation to use grant funds from AOIC for courtroom technology upgrades. Is there a motion? Ms. Taylor, second. Ms. Covert, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, sorry, Mr. Williams?
I just wanted to make a comment. I really like to see, like to, I've noticed Susan has received a lot of grant money, and I really want to commend her for getting grant money to pay for all these various technological upgrades that will help people. So I just wanted to say that. I love seeing that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The auditors, April and May reports are on the website. He is in the room if you've got questions. Sorry, didn't see you sitting back there, George. Okay, seeing none. I have no other business. I have no Chair's Report. Items to be placed on consent agenda, 9A1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And next, we have Justice and Social Services, Leah.
Thank you, Kyle. For Justice and Social Services, this month, we have the monthly reports for appropriation of court services, the public defender, and animal control have been placed on the webpage. The Rosecrans reentry financial report for April is available. Information only. I do not have other business right now, and I do not have a Chair's Report. Over to you, Kyle.
All right, thank you. There's no other business. Seeing no other business, call us meeting adjourned.